I'd like to call back to order the July 17th meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Okay, so we are going to go back to items 62 and 64. This is the proposed antelope property and business improvement district.
Good afternoon. The tabulation has occurred for this item, and I'm happy to report that we have a successful outcome for the antelope P-bid.
Great.
So with that, I'm going to recommend that you adopt the resolution establishing the antelope property and business improvement district, but I'm also going to read into the results to fill in the blanks of the resolution. So Section 3 of the resolution will read that at the close of the tabulation, the board had received 29 assessment ballots totaling 76.9 percent of the total assessment to be levied, of which 62.2 percent was in favor of the assessment and 37.8 percent was in opposition. And that's the only part I needed to read in there. So with that, I recommend that you adopt that resolution and also the resolution authorizing the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2018-19.
Any questions? No? I'll second that motion. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, number 63.
And then item 64 is regarding the Fulton Avenue Property and Business Improvement District on the renewal of the district and levy of assessments.
And I'm happy to report that we have a positive outcome on that ballot tabulation as well. In fact, one of the best ever, the highest ever for a renewal of the Fulton District.
Good for you guys.
The initial formation or the renewal, so that was really positive. So again, I will read into Section 3 of the resolution that at the close of the tabulation, the board had received 77 assessment ballots totaling 62.9 percent of the total assessment to be levied, of which 81.6 percent was in favor of the assessment and 18.4 percent was in opposition.
Wow. That's a lot of work on the part of the board and director, executive director. Good for you.
So with that, I recommend that you adopt the resolution renewing the Fulton Avenue P-bid and also adopt the resolution authorizing the levy of assessments for fiscal year 1819.
Jason, I'll make the motion on items 3 and 4. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Congratulations. Go forth and conduct business.
Okay, item 67 is the Grocery Outlet PCN ABC License Hearing to determine whether public convenience would be served by issuance of a type 20 liquor license to Grocery Outlet Incorporated located at 8835 Greenback Lane in the Orangevale community.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your planning director, here to give a short presentation. The site is a grocery outlet at 8835 Greenback Lane in the Orangevale community. The item before you is a request. Ultimately, the state ABC will issue the liquor license, but the finding before the board is whether public inconvenience and necessity would be served by issuance of a type 20 liquor license. Here's an aerial of the location. The next graphic shows the site and relationship to other liquor licenses in the surrounding area, including a one-mile buffer, or one-mile area radius, sorry. The project highlights is this is a request for beer and wine license type 20. The need for the PCN is triggered because it is in a high crime area. It is actually not in an over-concentrated area. The census tract allows for three liquor licenses, and the issuance of this license would bring the total to three. Within one-mile radius on the prior map, there are 11 establishments with current liquor licenses. Only one is a type 20 license, and all 10 are type 21 licenses. The recommendations before you are to approve the finding of public convenience and necessity. The Orangevale CPAC recommends approval on a six-to-zero vote. There are conditions as issued by the sheriff's letter. That is in Attachment 2 of your report. It includes that the sale of alcohol is limited to the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. No single sales of beer specifies the amount of shelf and cooler space. And then we also put conditions on the business license such as related to the cameras and the other security measures. Those will go on the county business license in the future. So the sheriff's department, as is their standard language, is willing to withdraw opposition if concurrence by the applicant with their conditions. We do have an applicant representative, Katie Shart, here. She's here to answer questions. She does not have a separate presentation.
Okay, Ms. Frost?
I have a question relating to the single sales of beer. I guess the prior licensee in that location was able to sell single sales because they had an older license that was grandfathered in. Is that correct?
I do know that the older licenses did not have the single sales restrictions, so I believe that to be true. And starting in the early to mid 2000s, the board sort of developed the current set of conditions that we've been asking ABC to apply, which includes the no single sales. So the newer licenses do have that restriction and the older ones don't.
Okay, and I wanted to bring this up because this is something that's been emerging over the last couple of years. These craft beer, single serving of craft, single bottle servings of craft beer, which is, it's not inexpensive, and there are a lot of small breweries that are popping up all over our region, small businesses selling craft beers, and it's become very popular. In fact, some people refer to this as the beer revolution. These are the connoisseurs of beer. And what they like to do is they like to go buy a single bottle of craft beer, or all different kinds, in single bottles, and then they try those bottles to determine which ones they like. They don't drink it. It's not like, I guess, Mickey's or the 40-ounce beers where people buy it to go get drunk. It's different. It's connoisseurs of beer. And in this area where this grocery outlet is going in, and I'm not bringing this up to hold up this hearing, I'm bringing this up as a request for information on this. For my, I'm interested in this because there are several multiple other businesses in the nearby region around this store who are selling single-serving craft beers. And it doesn't seem fair when someone new comes in or when a smaller, newer business comes in, they can't compete on the same level as other businesses that are already selling that same thing. It limits opportunity for small businesses. And I think to my, based on what my constituents are telling me, this is like, times are changing, maybe? I don't know. So I was just wondering if I, what I'd like to do is request that we look at this. I know there's trepidation around this single-serving beers in certain situations that wouldn't be conducive to public, the well-being of the public, but I would like to look into this and find out if there's a way to separate out or identify a craft beer as different and if there's a way that we can make that more equitable for newer, smaller businesses who are trying to compete in the same market for the same thing. And I just also want to say that my constituents are really excited about the possibility of being able to go and buy a single craft beer in a store because they cost seven or eight dollars, they're not cheap, and to have to buy it in a package with several of them, and you don't even know if you're going to like it, it's no fun. You know, they'll go to another store to get it. So I was wondering if we could look into that over time and report back on what your thoughts, what you found out. I know there are other jurisdictions like Lincoln and Rockland, I think, are selling, they've, they have legalized single servings on craft beers, and they have specific parameters on how they do that. So, and I'm supportive of this item today. I just wanted to bring that up so that we could be looking for that in the future.
Okay, so you're asking that, are you going to make a motion to approve this application?
I will.
And then you want more information on the?
No, I move approval on this application today, and then I would like to come back with more information and pursue what our opportunities are to support smaller businesses that are emerging with this new wonderful beer revolution.
I will second vote.
Yeah. Okay. Any further questions? Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, item 68, zoning code amendments related to supportive living uses resolution of initiation. Request to adopt a resolution of initiation to initiate amendments to the zoning code of Sacramento County related to residential and group living uses.
I have a presentation. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Peters and board members. I'm Jessica Brandt with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. I am in front of you today to request approval to initiate amendments to the Sacramento County zoning code related to supportive housing uses. Supportive living uses is a term that has been adopted by staff to serve as a neutral umbrella category for a variety of housing types that include some level of service or support. This includes boarding houses, residential care homes, and single-family dwellings where individuals are not residing together in a single household or family as defined under dwelling unit. The last category usually takes the form of halfway homes, sober living homes, and other informal group living arrangements. With adoption of the Development Code package in 2015, a number of new provisions were implemented related to such supportive living uses, including development of a dwelling unit definition that described what is considered a single household, establishment of a minor use permit requirement for conversion of single-family residences to five bedrooms or more, and a requirement for single-family dwellings that no longer operated as a single household to obtain a certificate of nonconforming use. All of these amendments were included in an effort to address supportive living uses that were having negative impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. Just as a note at the bottom here, we are initiating amendments regarding this subject at the board level because of the substantive nature of the topic and implications on the regulatory changes. We have a general idea of where we would like to go with these amendments, but we wanted to give the board the opportunity to give us direction on particular topics you would like to see addressed as our effort. After three years of working with the revised code sections, staff has determined that amendments to a number of areas would more effectively and efficiently categorize and regulate supportive living uses in residential areas. This assessment comes from three main causes. First, development of new types of supportive living arrangements. For example, congregate living health facility, or CLIFs, are a new hybrid convalescent hospital residential use, where care provided is not as intense as that provided in general acute care hospitals, but is more intense than what the code currently allows for in a residential care home. Supporting living uses generally continue to evolve and blur the lines between our existing categories. Second, changes continue to happen at the state and federal level related to supportive living arrangements. Two leading examples of these changes include potential licensing requirements for sober living homes and the inclusion of chronic alcoholism as a recognized disability under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Finally, staff has experienced a number of issues with enforcing the current regulations. For example, here, the requirement to obtain a minor use permit for conversion of single-family residences to five bedrooms or more does not appear to have had a curtailing effect on illegal conversions to boarding homes, which was the intent of the requirement. As stated earlier, staff has a general idea where amendments would be helpful, as outlined in this slide. First, additions to the zoning code, which could include a category for recovery residences should the state begin licensing sober living homes, development of a general small care home category to cover supportive living arrangements that are not generally licensed by the state, such as halfway homes, potentially sober living homes if licensing through the state doesn't come through, and others that do not fit neatly into another category, and either adding a skilled nursing and residential settings category or expanding the existing residential care home category to include such services. Second, expansions of existing provisions, which would include allowing boarding houses, which are also known as room and boards, in all residential zones with a use permit. Currently, they're not allowed in our single-family residential zones at all, and with robust use standards. And then again, as stated earlier, clarifying the residential care home category, designating it for the range of care homes that are licensed by the state only, such as senior living, adults with disabilities. Finally, as discussed, removal of code requirements, such as the minor use permit requirement for fifth-bedroom conversions and the current certificate of nonconforming use requirement for nonconforming dwellings. In conclusion, staff is requesting that the board adopt a resolution of intention to initiate amendments to the zoning code of Sacramento County related to residential and group living uses, or supportive living uses, as I've been using. Staff is also requesting that the board provide any guidance on direction as we begin amendment development. It is anticipated that development of draft proposed amendments will include outreach to interested housing and human services policy groups, as well as to our CPACs. Staff anticipates that a set of amendments will come back before the Planning Commission and Board for consideration in early 2019. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, I think Jessica, certainly in the staff report, you know, covered some of the direction they want to head in. I guess, if recollection serves me correctly, though, we had quite a conversation about this going back two or three years ago, this board. There were some examples that may have been addressed through, either through the efforts of the planning department or code enforcement or others that were, I think, some of the poster examples for what was going sideways in a number of neighborhoods throughout the unincorporated area. Certainly, I know that LeAnn actually attended with me probably four years ago or more now a community meeting in Rosemont where we had a couple of different situations, and it became very difficult. There were law enforcement issues associated with it, but certainly conversions that may have even had building permits that allowed for that. I think that's how we got to at least some of the conclusion that maybe having some additional permitting for a greater number than four might be one way to address it. It sounds like that hasn't been effective, at least to what it was intended to maybe stem as it relates to conversion to homes that would have multiple numbers of folks that weren't permitted in one way or the other. I guess I'm curious, though, that by adding the additional definitions and/or at least the notations about care homes and recovery residence and so forth and so on, what is it that you intend to have behind that? Because the point that we talked about a few years ago was, none of these facilities weren't licensed. You know, there wasn't any licensure, so that was required relative to the state, may have been a business license that would obtain or not. And yet, again, if memory serves me correct, we had one that had like 26 or 27 different, you know, places for people to actually stay overnight, I guess, and maybe bunk beds and so forth. We saw some of the pictures of that particular residence. That'd probably be an anomaly versus, or the exception versus the rule. So I guess what my question is, is so what is it that behind these? You talk about the law, and I know that's been part of the frustration. Certainly, Chris has sat with us through many years here off and on about discussions about, you know, what ADA or certain definitions of, under the law, either provide this board via some ability to regulate from a land use standpoint or not. So I guess at the end of the day, Jessica or LeAnn, what is it that you're going to bring back to us that by just adding these categories, what, you're going to have a definition that says this is what this constitutes, you're allowed up to six, or nine, or 10, or 12, or requires a use permit? So at least what are you going to start out with? Obviously, that's an iteration that will, you know, again, as it evolves through the hearing process and public review process, may end up with something very different. But what is it the planning staff, and I know you're seeking some direction today, so I wanted to kind of, before I jumped in too deeply, get an idea of what you're looking to do beyond what's in the staff report.
I do think that staff is looking more to the use standards as the means to bring a little bit of structure to a lot of these categories. What we found was that, for instance, the residential care home category, we don't really have a robust set of standards that they have to follow. And so once one is categorized there, they say they have six people, they go on their merry way, and there's really no way to kind of, you know, come back and say, hey, you're not following our use standards, you know, you're out of compliance with noise or parking vehicles, you know, safety issues and the like. So it seems like rather than going with more of those development standards like the fifth bedroom, to track more towards what's actually going on. And then the categories themselves, either expanding what falls under the categories or expanding the number of categories, we're hoping that we get away from that sort of catch-all, it's a nonconforming dwelling, and so we just have a very limited amount that we can do about it because it's, hey, it's always been there, and we just have to kind of let them keep moving. So that's sort of the direction, is going, delving more into those use standards.
So this is directed, again, where state law expressly provides for, you know, six or under, that this is for, I guess, more than six, right?
We would have to allow six and under, but that doesn't mean we can't have use standards for those sorts of uses.
We can't, we actually can't.
Yeah.
So state licensing, you just, you can't have discretion and tell them they can't be there.
Right, right.
But you can have standards that they have to meet as a complement then to...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I can work with Jessica on those as they get developed, but yeah.
Well, again, I guess helpful, you know, and it might go at least part of the way towards, I think, addressing some of the neighborhood and community issues that we see over time. Okay, and then you said this, but you, you know, you said it may take six months. I think if you go up to the CPACs, you may get quite an earful, so it might be a little longer, six months.
Oh, no doubt, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
For the questions? Okay, I want to say, you know, I agree with John, you're probably need more time than that, but I think the way this issue was described in the staff report is very dry and not easy to understand, and just very clinical, and I think you need to use some more real-life examples, at least in a staff report that goes out to the various bodies that will be looking at it. Because, and there's so many acronyms, the NCS... Because, and there's so many acronyms, the NCS, and the MUP, and the CPACs, and the PER, and the, you know, that's also not very reader-friendly. So, also, I'd recommend a, not a graph, but a chart of some kind, that has each of these different categories in it, and what that means. How big the house is, how many bedrooms, how many people can live in it, can more than one person per bedroom, you know, just all those things that people are going to ask. Yeah.
Good thoughts.
We've had some real knock-down dragouts here about that. And I know we have to be careful about how families live, and particularly with a lot of the immigrant families who have larger families, so. Okay, so this was really an initiation to start this process. And you'll be back at a time to be determined.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, you want us to adopt a resolution of intention?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I'll second it. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, and good luck.
Item 69, appointments from your own ranks to the regional water authority.
So, would any, I currently am on the regional water authority. Would anyone else like to be on the regional water authority? No one will look at me. Okay. So, I'll say. Do you need us to vote on it?
Please.
You're doing a great job.
We appoint Susan Peters as our continuing member.
My middle name is Carrie.
Carrie Schmitz being the alternate.
So, please vote.
Next is appointments from your own ranks to the first five Sacramento Commission.
Mr. Stern is the member, and Mr. Kennedy is the alternate. Are both of you happy with that arrangement?
Yep.
Anyone else? So, I'll move approval.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, and now we have our nominations. Item 71. You are continuing to August 7th the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council, the County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consumnis, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Human Services Coordinating Council, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Maternal, Child, and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, the Paratransit Incorporated, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, Adult and Aging Commission.
Chief recommends Susan L. Takahashi, and Teresa Ogan, and Lynn Humphreys, and continue the remainder to August 21st.
I also had a note that they wanted you to waive the process.
Oh, yes, sorry, I see that there. So, please vote.
Children's Coalition.
Chief recommends continuing to July 24th.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Continue to August 7th.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
I would nominate and ask the process be waived to appoint Ted Walter. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. In-home supportive services advisory committee.
I want to nominate incumbent Kimberly Lathrop for the consumer seat, and continue the remainder to July 24th.
Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Continue to July 24th.
Sacramento County Youth Commission.
District 5.
Yes, we would move that the, we appoint, waive process, and appoint Arjen Claire.
Second, please vote.
Veterans Advisory Commission Supervisor Peters.
Continue to August 21st.
Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I continue mine to August the 7th. I've done most of my interviews, I have one left.
And then, we have the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council Supervisor Kennedy.
Reappoint Bill Thompson and waive process.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And Supervisor Natoli?
Nominate Bart Baer, incumbent.
And that concludes your nominations. Where, do you guys have a note on here where we're continuing this to, the remainder?
Hold this question?
I didn't understand what you said.
Where, how far are we continuing out the remainder?
Remainder for...
Remainder of what?
The remainder of the nominations.
The remainder of the nominations. Oh, okay. That's all I had in my binder that we went through.
Okay, let's just continue.
August 24th.
Let's do that. 21st?
21st.
Okay.
So, anything that we didn't address, we're continuing to August 21st?
To August 20, yeah, 21st.
Spitballing.
That concludes your nominations.
County Executive, have any comments?
No comments.
Board members?
Yes, ma'am chair, yeah. Actually, I had some comments, but I, on just a couple items that were information on the agenda first, if I could. On item 79.
79, Sacramento County Department of Transportation. This is the contract for the Rosemont Area Streetlight Project, the rejection of all bids, and re-advertising of the project.
Right, and understanding why that the bids came in significantly above what was the engineer's estimate. And I've talked with DOP staff about this, and about maybe looking at a different approach to the project, and I know that this would give direction to re-advertise in December of this year. I did just want to, and maybe you can carry this back now, ask, we did a couple of fairly large community meetings, neighborhood meetings, large in the sense we had, you know, 40, 50 folks turn out, that were pretty enthusiastic, once we kind of got through some of the detail about what this would entail. And I actually received some communication from folks yesterday, that were, you know, disappointed that we were rejecting bids, they understand why, but it's certainly very interesting. So, we did develop a newsletter, so I would hope that as a part of that, and I communicate this as well, but, that we would inform folks as to reasoning why, that we're gonna be coming back, and that we're looking at, we're still very committed to doing the project. So that was the point I wanted to make. This just is our normal notification, it doesn't really tell people that, people picked up and followed our agenda, so I wanted to note that. And then, secondly, on the information item, item 82.
82. Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, the calendar year 2017 red light photo enforcement program.
And I would just note with this one, that this was a report back this board had asked for, showed up on information item, and we received some communication, at least a couple of folks who've tracked this, who aren't necessarily supportive of red light enforcement, but the, the point made, at least in the communication from folks, was is that apparently the contract expires at the end of this calendar year. I don't know that to be the case, but I would think that before we actually go back out to that, I don't know if it's under the sheriff's purview, or it's under this board's authority, obviously, the contract has to be approved by this board, that we would have a little further conversation about the program. I think the report was good, it showed reduction in collisions, and hopefully some safer locations. Although, some of the data, that a couple of the folks that wrote to us, at least one of them, they submitted data from some other California cities that didn't show a similar outcome. And, again, not to dispute what we are finding here, if it's safer for our residents, then that's what we're to be concerned about. But I just wanted to pass it on now, I don't know if you saw, the communication came from a couple of the folks that wrote in response to the information item on the agenda, so...
I've not, but that is a topic of conversation with the sheriff's office for this contract.
Okay, all right. Thanks. And then, ma'am chair, I just had a comment under supervisor's comments. And I know that your offices probably also received during the July 4th ramp-up to the Independence Day holiday, but also subsequent to that, I trust. Again, this year, I think with a growing number of incidents, the, in particular, the use of illegal fireworks, some of the media coverage that was shown on television on July the 4th, but that subsequently played the next day, showed some California cities, but it showed Sacramento in the backdrop, and looked like bombs bursting in the air. And from illegal fireworks, mortars, M-80s. And one of the other reports that I saw, said that there were 35 reported calls, you know, for service. Obviously, the fire department responds when there's fires that occur that are due to fireworks or other incidents, but certainly with fireworks being a major factor in some of the incidents. But, you know, what caught my attention, was there were no arrests made. And I think that the consequence, people talk about banning fireworks, and some of the feedback that I got, and kind of fallout in, you know, days leading up to and since then, people asking for a ban on fireworks, that may be something this board certainly would want to take into consideration, other communities have done it, but I think the problem is deeper than just banning on fireworks. A lot of the fireworks we've seen that have caused situations that have been unsafe, fires in homes, and certainly injury to folks, and the proliferation of illegal fireworks, not just in the sales, and we saw the fire departments did obviously some recovery, and some arrests were made for folks that were actually marketing the materials. It seems to me that we, as a community, need to really take an examination about what the consequences are for the use of illegal fireworks, and some of these that, again, what you would see in probably shows that you pay to go, or go to community events and see. And I guess, what I wanted to suggest, and I mentioned this to the county executive, at least one of my colleagues on the board, that beyond, you know, this discussion about banning fireworks, because I don't think that does it, if there's no consequence, whether safe and sane fireworks, or illegal ones, then I don't see what's gonna stem the activity. And, and so I think it's gonna require a concerted look, and I know, I think you, Chair Peters, last year raised the issue, maybe with...
Couple years ago.
Yeah. And, you know, had fire chiefs involved. I think it requires law enforcement, I think it requires our district attorney, and our, you know, police chiefs, as well as our sheriff, and the fire personnel, and now, I'd certainly leave it to your discretion, but I think we need to take the lead on this, because, again, just responding and saying, well, yeah, it's a problem, and then telling people, well, you know, the, you know, there's already a ban on these things, but if there's no consequence, and there's nobody being arrested, nobody being cited, then you might as well just say there's no rules, because we're not doing anything about it. And yet, people are in peril, and, again, I don't want to overstate it, nor understate it, and I guess it's my view, coming off of the July 4th holiday this year, that we ought to really do a serious examination, and I would hope that this board be interested in maybe taking the lead to have our county executive entertain, you know, bringing law enforcement, certainly our prosecutors, maybe even some folks from the industry, but certainly, those that are already banned are the ones that are the greatest problem that I see. There's a fire potential, obviously, with ones that are, you know, sold at the neighborhood stands and so forth, but the preponderance of those that are going up in the air, that, you know, causing injury, and calls for service, and then with no consequence, that makes no sense to me, so.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'd just like to follow up on that. And there was actually a house in District 2 that was significantly damaged by fire, and I was actually flying over Sacramento during it, and it looked like a war zone. It was bizarre. To me, and we get the calls, we all, all five of us get the calls every year, and, you know, nobody has a solution to it, and I think, you know, my opinion is, is that, you know, instead of going after the users, because that's almost impossible, I mean, how do you find...
It is impossible.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, that we go after the distributors, or, I mean, they're selling these things somewhere. And I will say, though, that this year was the first year that I'm aware, that there was a joint task force that included city police, sheriff's department, metro fire, to actually, you know, tackle this, so that's a step in the right direction, but I think a concerted effort has to be made. These things are coming from somewhere, and we need to go out...
Havana, Mexico.
We need to, we need to find out, you know, where that's happening, because going after the users is just, we're gonna be chasing our tails.
Well, maybe we could have some information back on the task force. I hadn't heard about a joint task force, but maybe that would be helpful, in, you know, in briefing, it's not in the board meeting, and we'll decide whether we want to go forward on it.
There's a task force, and then the fire chiefs have also been meeting on this. It's more on the user side, not where it's coming from. So I think I can report back on both, what the fire chiefs have been doing, what the task force is doing. I think your point, Supervisor Natoli, I think the DA, that's basically the feedback we all of us get, is if we find these folks...
Or make an arrest, there's nothing's gonna happen.
Nothing's gonna happen.
Right. You can't put people in jail if they steal a gun from your house, how are you going to, if they set off fireworks?
But one of the things that Don and I had a good conversation about, when he brought this to my, this concern, which I think is a valid one to my attention, is if we were just to kind of limit the conversation, or the initial conversation, to what is under the purview or the control of this board, my understanding is that fines relative to the penalty for setting off illegal fireworks are within our purview. And why couldn't we do what, you know, other agencies in different contexts have done in the past, with setting, by setting some extremely painful, high penalties, measured in the thousands of dollars, tens of thousands if necessary, and that combined with perhaps plainclothes operations next Fourth of July, and use the whole year in front of us to plan carefully around that, both the penalty side, the increased penalty side, and the fact that anyone that dares to set off these types of fireworks is gonna be putting themselves at great financial risk, to the tune of perhaps $25,000, $30,000, who knows? But, to me, that, if that is in fact what is in our control, and I would expect county council's office to, you know, inform us about that, to me, that's one way you might be able to make potential users think twice about doing what we all have seen, not just this year, but in recent years.
I think if the board's comfortable, what I can do is, all the input that we receive, is to see what's at our disposable, disposal, what can we do, and give you a report back on that.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Natoli? Mr. Stern?
Thank you. I just wanted to publicly thank Brian Rivas, who recently came off of our SCOWE board, who served for, I believe, two terms. Brian represented District, or Area 2. He also served as the alternate for my office on our library authority board, so I wanted to publicly thank him for his service in both those respects. And then I also, in the same breath, wanted to issue strong congratulations to Karina Telemontes, who won the seat somewhat late, due to it being a very close race for Area 2 to fill that seat, and as was probably noted by my colleagues, she has now been officially appointed as my alternate for the library authority, so congratulations to Karina. Looking forward to working with you.
Okay, I have some adjournments. Does anybody else?
I'd like to congratulate myself for winning reelection.
There you go.
Would you like some applause?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I have two adjournments. First, in memory of Rhea Dariotis Brunner, who unexpectedly passed last month, the age of 62. For many of us, the Dariotis name is well-known for the family-owned restaurant, The Old Spaghetti Factory, where Rhea worked for many years, both in the front of the house, and is one of the best servers they ever had, according to restaurant folklore. After graduating from UCLA, she settled in Sacramento, pursuing dual master's degrees in social work and public administration at Sac State, ultimately becoming a lobbyist for California Association of Rehabilitation Facilities. She was dedicated to our community, and served on the Crocker Art Museum Board from 2008 to 2018, including two years as president. She was a former board member and president of WEAVE, the National Charity League, and the Del Paso Foundation Board. In addition, she served on the Sacramento County Grand Jury. She was a passionate golfer, and had three holes in one to prove it, and numerous golf championships. Her joyful presence and her community involvement will be missed by her family and the extensive circles of friends, as well as the community at large that benefited from her volunteerism. So I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Rhea Dariotis Brunner. One more I would like to talk about, last year Sacramento area lost a real estate pioneer with a... with the passing of John Reinon. He came to Sacramento after Stanford Law School, working for the California Division of Highways, the predecessor to Caltrans. Not entirely satisfied with the practice of law, began to conduct real estate transactions in his after-hours, initially investing in fourplexes, and later joined in a partnership with Chris Bardas, a business union that would last half a century, and the rest, as they say, is history. Reinon and Bardas and its various affiliated entities would build thousands of homes and develop thousands of acres, both in the Great O Sacramento area and Northern Nevada. He was a leader who listened much more than he talked. He was a quiet man. He was noted for his, nearly, his astonishing calm when faced with challenges, including when he faced near personal financial ruin during the 2008 crash. Over the years, he took up a myriad of leisure, everything he tackled, he worked to master, including sport fishing. And in 2006, he took second place in the Bisbee's Black and Blue, the world's largest marlin tournament. He was a remarkable gentleman and a true pioneer who helped change the landscape of the Sacramento area, providing housing for many families. So I'd like to ask that we adjourn in his name, too, so...
Ma'am Chair?
Uh-huh.
On the subject of the passing of John Reinon, who was not only a dear friend to me and probably all of us, but he also was my boss for several years when I worked at...
Oh, that's right.
Windcrest Homes in the mid and late 80s, and also, again, as Reinon and Bardas Communities in the early 2000s. And I know that many of us were away for our break, but I did have a chance to attend his memorial at the Crocker. It was very, very well done, a lot of good stories. Both Jack and Cristo, his two sons, gave wonderful tributes to their father, and so I'm glad that we're recognizing his contribution to our community, and certainly regret his passing, and give our best to his family.
He was one of the first real estate developers I loaned money to when I was starting off in commercial real estate, and when he was partnered with Chris Bardas. And that was when they were doing, what did they call them, Woody walk-ups?
Yeah, you can still see them around Midtown.
Yeah, there's still some of them still here. And they drove around in an old Cadillac convertible, and...
Yeah. Who said, you know, Cedar shingles were just for ruse?
Yeah, right. Yeah, he was a fun man. So, today, we adjourn in memory of Rhea Dariotis Brunner and John Reinon.